May I have your attention, please? The opportunity to sign up for public comment or public hearing expires when the Chair calls the meeting to order. The sign-in sheets are located on the podium. Please switch all electronic devices to silent mode. Our meeting will begin shortly. Thank you.
I would like to call the regular scheduled meeting for Fairfield County Council to order Monday, May 22, 2023 at 6:00 PM. If everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to add Item 6C, a public presentation from Gregory Sprouse regarding public hearing Item 8B, to receive information about the Fairfield County Needs Assessment as part of the South Carolina Community Development Block Grant Program to tonight's agenda.
So moved, Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-6-0 on approving the motion. Next, we are down to invocation.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think that was a motion to amend the agenda, so now it will be necessary to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record reflect, 6-0 on approval of the agenda. Next, we are down to invocation. Pastor T.A. Belton, Zion Pilgrim Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Gracious God in heaven, as we come on this day, we come now, Lord, to invoke Thy Spirit into this meeting, and Lord, we pray that whatever we do on this day, that You will get the glory. I pray now, God, for the wisdom of those who serve us on this county council, and we pray for the people and the state and the nation. We action, our God, that You will have Your way in this place. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Belton. Next, we are down to five. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting made of 8, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Let the record reflect, 6-0 on approval of minutes. Now, we are down to 6A. Public Presentations. A National EMS Week Proclamation, May 21 through the 27, 2023. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. A proclamation recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week, May 21 through the 27, 2023. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. The emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. The members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-giving skills. Therefore, be it now resolved that the Fairfield County Council do hereby designate the week, May 21 through 27, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the EMS Strong theme, EMS Week, where emergency care begins, we encourage the community to observe this week with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. So order this, the 22nd day of May, 2023, signed by full council.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, and I think we have the EMS Director here as well, if he wants to come forward. Any council? Any council members getting anything to say?
I'd just like to say, we really appreciate the service that our EMS do for the county, and... Yes, my best. Thank you.
Next, we are down to 6B. National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 21 through the 27, 2023. Dr. Roberts.
A proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Fairfield County. These infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of public works professionals, who are federally mandated first responders, engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. It is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Fairfield County, to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities. The year 2023 themed Connecting the World Through Public Works marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Therefore, now be it resolved that the people of Fairfield County do hereby designate the week of May 21 through the 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. So order this, the 22nd day of May, 2023, signed by full council.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, and we do have the Public Works Director, Mr. Jonathan Burrows, in attendance, if he would come forward. Mr. Burrows, have you stopped for one minute?
Mr. Ruth.
Hold on, I... Thank you, Mr. Burrows, I appreciate it, and I gotta tell him I had to apologize to him, because I greeted him when we came in, and I never saw him dressed up like this. So I said, "I'm Dan Ruth, good to see you." But I've had people do that to me, too, but I appreciate everything y'all do, you're gonna do an outstanding job. Thank you very much.
Mr. Burrows, I'd also like to echo the same. We thank you for the services that you provide the county, and we really appreciate the work that you do and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Next, we are down to 6C. Is Mr. Gregory Sprouse.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Sprouse, and I work for Central Midlands Council of Governments. And for those of you that are not familiar with our agency, we're a regional planning agency that serves the four county area, including Richland, Lexington, Fairfield, and Newberry Counties. And we've... I'll just say that we appreciate the county's support of our agency, and I really enjoy working for Fairfield County. And so this... My presentation today is just a way to introduce the public hearing that's coming up related to the Community Development Block Grant Needs Assessment. And so by way of introduction, I'm just gonna give you a brief overview of the... I'm gonna call it the CDBG program, Grant Program. Tell you a little bit about the program, tell you a little bit about what the purpose of the needs assessment, and then some of the grant requirements, and then hopefully that'll pave the way for public comment. So the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, program is a federal program from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it's administered through the South Carolina Department of Commerce. And the purpose of the program is to provide assistance to communities with improving economic opportunities and meeting community revitalization needs. But the focus, or primary focus of the program, is to benefit low and moderate income populations in the communities. And so HUD, the... This is Department of Housing and Urban Development, gives the money to entitlement areas or urban counties directly, but for rural counties, they have to compete through the state program, which, as I said, is administered by the South Carolina Department of Commerce. The national objectives established under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 make activities eligible that must meet one of these national objectives: Benefit Low/Moderate Income Persons, which HUD describes as a neighborhood or community that is 51% or more, that less... That makes less than or equal to 80% of the median family income for the area. Another activity is aid in the prevention of slum and blight, and meet other community development needs that have a particular urgency to the public welfare or health. And so eligible projects and available funding in this program, the Department of Commerce, they allocate funds every year, so the estimated 2023 funds is $16 million, and that's for all of the rural areas across the state. And they make this money available through a competitive grant program through different primary programs. One of the... One of the most popular ones is community infrastructure, and that round of funding comes about every spring, so the applications are always due in the springtime. And this primarily is for water sewer and drainage improvements. So we currently have a Community Development Block Grant open with the town of Windsboro to install a backup generator at the sewer plant, so that's one type of eligible project that's underway. The Community Enrichment Program is the fall application cycle, and it's for such activities as demolition and clearance of dilapidated properties, brownfield remediation, library, park improvements, and that type of thing. There's also a Neighborhood Revitalization Program, which is part of the fall cycle as well, and it's for neighborhood improvement projects, usually a package of projects. And so the county currently has one that we've been working on for a while in the Zion Hill Neighborhood. The primary purpose is demolishing vacant and dilapidated homes. And we also have a... They also have a local priorities program, which is for projects that don't fit in one of those particular areas and can meet project needs that aren't typically funded, and those are very difficult to get, but oftentimes Commerce will try to help if there's an existing project where there's a lot of existing leverage from other funding sources. And then they also have a Ready-to-Go program, which is for projects that have already been designed or engineered and just really need a little bit of extra funding to get off the ground. And those two, the local priorities and Ready-to-Go programs, aren't on an annual cycle, they... You can kind of submit those as needed. So one of the grant requirements is we have to do... In order to be eligible for a project, a community has to do what's called a needs assessment, and it's a document that tries to identify community development priorities. And so the county does this every year, we do it on an annual basis, because the county works with the COG for planning for the four county area. And this document tries to identify community development needs related to housing, infrastructure, public facilities, public safety, economic development, and then we try to prioritize those and develop projects out of those... Out of those needs. And so one requirement for developing this needs assessment is that we have a public hearing and get public input on what those needs and priorities are that should be included in that plan. So that's what we're... Where the public hearing session is tonight. And then the last thing I'll say is the CDBG program also has a number of other federal requirements, one of which is to be in compliance with the Fair Housing Act. And to be a part of the program, we have to do a lot of fair housing-related activities, and that's a really important piece of it, as it's an important piece of legislation. And one way that the county supports that is through adopting the Fair Housing Resolution in April of every month, which I think you all did at the last council meeting. So just wanted to tell you how much we appreciate your support for this program, for the COG, and for all of these activities.
Thank you. Any... Any questions? Comments? Thank you. Next, we are down to eight public hearings. And before we get started on these, I want to make sure that... Oh, I'm sorry. Next, we are down to seven. First, public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two persons signed up to speak. First person, Joe Wilks.
Good evening. I'm Joe Wilks, District 2. I'm here to really ask questions about ordinance number 814. It's my understanding that it's verbiage in this ordinance to change dirt roads, change common driveways into a classification that will not be worked by the county. They're changing from being a dirt road to a common driveway, and driveways are not worked. This is gonna create a vast hardship on a lot of people in Fairfield, because we have a tremendous amount of dirt roads. I happen to live on one myself, and we rely on these roads to be in shape so we can get police, fire, medical, and postage. Mailman goes up and down these roads. And there's a lot of people in the rural areas that's on fixed incomes and will not be able to take care of these roads themselves. And I don't know how long the county has been doing it, but I do know it's well over 60 years, and so I don't see really the need to stop now. I hope I'm wrong on my information, but it was supplied to me this afternoon, and I felt like someone needed to question it, because it's gonna impact a tremendous amount of people in Fairfield County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. I first want to take a moment to remind everyone, May is Military Appreciation Month, and I want to publicly thank all those veterans, past, present, and future, and their family, for their service to the country, really to the world, for protecting our freedoms and way of life. Thank you, all military. The other subject at hand, the audit. Good to see, we're gonna get an update today. But just a reminder, we've had two disastrous audits that have been delayed by, I guess, six months, up to six months now. We've had two years of flying in a fog financially as a county, not knowing whether we have the money, not knowing whether we don't have the money, up and down, voting even though we don't know where we stand financially. It is imperative that part of the audit, the major part of the audit, should be how do we permanently fix our financials. I and others talked about, one step is to follow other counties' lead in producing monthly reports so that we know where we stand every month, and there's no surprises when we say, "Oops, we don't know where we stand." It's gonna take us another six months to find out past the deadline. Another aspect is, I have grave concern, as I expressed last time, while they may not be under the same name, the auditors, based upon the speech last time, are gonna deliver the same cavalier, non-urgent corrective responses. We've got to get a handle on our finances. I don't know how we gonna vote on a budget, and we don't know where we stand on our finances, and haven't known for now, two and a half years. I would urge you to ensure with the auditor that we get real standards, real processes, real ideas, how we fix our finances, so we can best use the resources that we have. And yes, we still have, if you look at the reports, we still have per capita among the highest revenue, total revenue of any county in the state. We should... How can we not manage the finances there? How can we not correct this problem so we can fly straight going forward with knowing how much we have now and tomorrow? Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Next, we are down to eight public hearings. And before we get started, I just want to make sure that the county did proper notification for these public hearings. Okay. 8A, the ordinance authorizing and de-execution and delivery of a revised and restated multi-county industrial park agreement between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Kershaw County, South Carolina, ratifying the existing park boundaries and other related matters. This hearing will open at 6:23 PM.
Yes, Mr. Chair. One person signed up to speak, Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. Every time I see this multi-park agreements, I'm reminded, why not Fairfield? When are we gonna get on board? And most importantly, nearly two years after the Dominion Agreement was signed, $77 million netted out, or '73, whatever, we still don't have a plan for the vital imperative sewer expansion, sewer upgrade, new sewer plant. Can't move forward without it. We've had gone two years and a half now with basically no new economic development. Surely, that is a major cog in our economic development process. I know it's not the county council's fault. The last meeting of the Joint Water Commission, the double secrecy, the no announcements, gives us grave concerns. When are we ever going to see a plan for a water sewer plant? When are we ever going to be able to trust the legitimacy of the plan if we're going to continue to hold double-secret meetings? I would like to see council push the Joint Water Commission to move forward.
Mr. Bright. The public hearing is on the multi-county park and not the wastewater treatment plant and not the Joint Water Authority?
Okay, I'll continue on that. Again, now it was explained last time on the joint water park, all the reasoning and rationale behind it, yet we still print it again on the ordinance without any of the details. We also have a grave concern about, again, I'm gonna say, why not Fairfield on the joint water, on the multi-position park? When are we gonna sign one? When are other counties gonna sign one that we have? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. We will close this public hearing at 6:26 PM. Now, we are down to... Now, we are down to 8B.
A public hearing to solicit public input on community needs and priorities for housing, public facilities, and economic development. Input received will be incorporated into the Fairfield County Needs Assessment, which identifies potential activities for grant funding, including potential activities for application to the South Carolina Community Development Block Grant Program, where the primary beneficiaries are persons of low and moderate income. One person signed up to speak, Mr. Chair, Randy Bright.
We will open this public hearing at 6:27 PM.
In recent memory, we've had several community needs assessments. We had one this time last year. It was an online survey. There was some movement to go out into the field and get some more input. I don't think it went anywhere. We also had a needs assessment survey that we met and some funding with the federal government, and it's still ongoing. And to my kno... And some of you attended it, to my knowledge. It's not going anywhere, just more talk. And I hope this time, we get much better publicity, much better conveyance to the public that tell us what you need. Let's really listen to the people. One way is, let's leverage our Facebook. We've got a long ways to go to leverage the Facebook and get people to watching it, people to look at it. One way to get people to look at your Facebook page is to post all the videos from the meetings on the Facebook page of the council, and the Fairfield County Council Facebook page, Fairfield County Government, I should say. There's a lot of other things you can do to boost the... to convey to the public of the announcement of these assessment meetings. Let's have the people have a great say, but let's not hide it so much that we don't. Let's really make an all-out effort. Newsletters don't do any good, but the newspapers, your Facebook page, many counties leverage a Facebook page. I gave you some... I'll give you some more ideas if you want later, don't have the time. And I would say, like all the other needs assessment surveys, the answers are already there, quite frankly. We've had nothing but surveys and planning since the year 2008, and all of them focused on infrastructure, affordable housing, safety through EMS, and our other first responders. And when I talk about infrastructure, I also include broadband. Broadband is extremely important, and the federal government's the only way that we're going to leverage this. Broadband is... makes a difference in everything from education to medicine, healthcare, employment, attracting new business, and it should be a major focus. But, one thing I caution you, let's ensure that we don't shotgun, like we have in the past, our needs, and then we get a little that means nothing instead of a few items that mean a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. We will close this public hearing at 6:30 PM. Next, we are down to number nine, ordinance resolutions and orders. 9A, third and final reading of ordinance number 811, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a revised and restated multi-county industrial park agreement between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Kershaw County, South Carolina, ratifying the existing park boundaries and other related matters. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Let the record reflect 6-0 on 9A. Now, we are down to 9B.
Second reading, ordinance number 814, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council to amend and restate ordinance number 764... 674, excuse me, roads, highways, and bridges and other matters related thereto.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of council. If there's no motion to bring the matter up on the floor for second reading, it would therefore die and therefore would not go forward, and it would end this matter.
Okay. Next, we are down to 10, board and commission minutes. Commission minutes for information only. A, disabilities and special needs, February 17, 2023, and March 17, 2023. Number 11, board and commission appointments, none. 12, old business. A, animal control ordinance, number 810, update.
Good evening, council. The committee had their first meeting on April 19. Unfortunately, we had to cancel the May 9 meeting, because we had another meeting to attend. But on the April 19 meeting, we discussed euthanization, the current condition, the condition of our current facility, and we also looked at City of Aiken ordinance. Also, the director, Animal Coach Control Director, Mr. Endes, provided us with additional county ordinance for us to review. So presently, the county attorney is working with the sheriff's office and the solicitor's office regarding some wording, some changes in the wording in our ordinance. So we will wait until they finish that before we schedule another meeting. That's it, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. And now, we are down to 12B, a Motorola change order for emergency management, and this is an action item.
We do have Ms. Jennifer McGriff here, the Director of Emergency Management, if there are any questions. But just real quick, the original Motorola solutions contract came through council in the form of a ROA, Request for Action, and was approved, and they are under state contracts, and that's why we're bringing this change order back to council for review. A real brief thing is that it included the cost to configure test and plan a cutover from the current system to the new statewide ESI net system. It was anticipated to happen in mid-2022, but due to delays on the contractor side, not the county side, is now scheduled for mid-2023, which could possibly slip into July. The change order includes the additional costs associated with engineering and project management support for that second cutover from the current system to the statewide system. And so you all originally approved it in December of 2021. But we do have Ms. McGriff here, if there are any questions related to the change order.
How much is the change order?
The final invoice came in $59,000 above the original amount, which a lot of it will be covered pending reimbursements from the state as well.
That was going to be my second question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the...
Chair, I...
Make a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt.
It's been motioned and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the change in the action item?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect 6-0 on 12B. Now, we are down to 13, new business, none. 14, county administrators' report. Thank you, Ms. McGriff.
With the housing study update, we just want to give council the update, because this was funded through the Rural Stabilization Funds from last year. The request for proposals for a qualified firm to conduct a housing study for Fairfield County went out on April 4. It stayed out for 30 days, and a review team reviewed. We received three responses back to the RFP. We are currently working with the top-scoring firm, which is MRB Group Consulting, and once we complete that, we get that review of their contract and come up with a final contract with them. We'll come back to council with a timeline, and we do want you all to be aware of that, because that probably will involve some public meetings to also get citizen input related to the housing study.
Item B, the audit update. I spoke with Malden and Jeakins last week, and I spoke with them today. And they have stated that I will have a draft by the end of the day, May 24, which is Wednesday. After we get the review, the draft, then finance will have to review the draft and ask any questions, et cetera. And hopefully, you know, our books match what's in the audit, and our review will go much quicker. After that, then we will get the final, and then we will schedule a council for them to come and present the audit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What kind of timeline are we looking at?
For the review?
We're saying that it's... that you'll get the draft on Wednesday, I guess, the 24th?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, you know, how does that progress? Or how long do you think that's going to take? Because we're pushing it, you know?
I know. The review normally doesn't take long, but I've never worked with this auditing firm before, but I think it should be fine. It may take us up to a week or so, just diligently going through the audit report. And then after that, we can get a final. And so hopefully, by June 12, they should be presenting to council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Williams. Next, we are down to 15, clerk the council's report, none. Item 16, second public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Two persons signed up to speak. First person, Don Goldbach.
I am Don Goldbach, District 2. I attended the May 4 budget meeting, where the department heads told council what money they need for the upcoming fiscal year, and the majority of which were asking for increases, some significant increases from the current fiscal year. There were a few things I expected to see before I came to this meeting, but I didn't. First, I expected to see all seven council members, but only four attended. Second, there was almost no challenge by council to any of the department heads on their proposed budgets. The most challenging line of questioning was directed at the small number of students taking advantage of a tuition program at Midlands Tech. And it appeared to me that every proposed budget was rubber-stamped and accepted. But the most surprising thing for me was, there was no visibility whatsoever of the amount of money actually spent during the current fiscal year. This meeting took place in May, which means 10 months of the current fiscal year were behind us, and that means 10 months of actual spending was behind us. I really expected to see the department heads show how much money was actually spent over these 10 months, with an estimate for what they expect to spend for the remaining two months, and explain whether they were on budget, over budget, or under budget. What I saw instead was each department head comparing next year's budget to this year's budget. And quite frankly, that is a meaningless exercise, in my opinion. And I can excuse the three council members that weren't here for that. Without looking at actual expenditures against the budget, there's really no way to identify opportunities to reduce spending. And there's no way to identify problem areas where spending is over budget, so corrective action could be taken. A variance target should be set for each line item in a department's budget, for example, plus or minus 10%, 15%, 20%. So if a line item is more than 10% over budget, corrective actions need to be identified. If a line item is 15% under budget, that might be an opportunity for cost reduction in the future. As a taxpaying citizen of Fairfield County, that is the kind of transparency and financial accountability I would like to see, not just in the annual budgeting process, but every month during the fiscal year. And as you, this council, works to improve our financial reporting, I ask you to incorporate these improvements. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Randy Bright.
I agree with Don. The process of the budgeting is not going as well as it should. Part of the problem, I realize, is the delay in finishing the audit, and hopefully, we'll get that behind us, and then hopefully, we'll fix it. But frankly, without hearing anything else, I don't have a much hope for that. Some other issues that I have with the budget itself, besides not knowing what we spent last year on items, is that I didn't hear one question directed to the department heads and to the NGOs. What are you doing to improve your service, your efficiency, and your effectiveness? They're asking you, me, all of us, for money, but we can't hold them accountable for the additional money that we're supposed to give them? We can't ask them to do better? The other thing I'm really concerned with that Don did not mention, we're drawing an additional $4.2 million from the fund balance than we budgeted for last year. And then considering, we have, last look, $4.2 million in reserve in the fund balance that really pushes us very tight. Do we really need to do that? Or is the fact that we don't know where we stand in money, we go ahead and do it anyway? I would like to see us get no more than we did last year, that million and change draw the fund balance. You're really putting us in a very vulnerable position by drawing down so much money out of the fund balance, particularly when we have all that money set aside for the leases on this building, $4.2 million at last look. And then we have a few other things that we have set aside as in reserve. There's not a lot of wiggle room there. I think you guys are gambling. I think you guys have not looked at that $4.2 million raise in the fund balance with drawing down on it as it should be looked at. A very vulnerable, very scary position to put us in, and a very tight position for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. And I just want to say thank you to everyone that's here tonight. Thank you for taking the time to be here at the council meeting and using your time to speak during the public comment session. Now, we are down to item 17, county council time. Any council members wish to speak?
On yesterday, there was a funeral for Mr. Tommy Scott Young, and I don't think many citizens of Fairfield County is aware that Mr. Young was one of the first people in the state of South Carolina to convince our state to involve the arts for schoolchildren. And he brought in many different performers and different kind of plays, and a lot of musicians to really involve our school systems. musicians to really involve our school systems, and not, not just Fairfield County, I'm talking about at the state level, in the arts with the Katani Foundation. So at some particular point in time, Mr. Douglas, I, Mr. Pauli, I do think that we should make sure that we do a proclamation for his family and recognition. He was born and raised here in Fairfield County, and of course, I think we should certainly promote the excellent work that he has, that he had done, not just here in Fairfield County, but as a performer in Hollywood, as well as in New York. Thank you.
I would just like to mention that on Monday, it is a holiday for Fairfield County. All the county offices will be closed. Ms. Johnson, will the recycling centers be open?
No, they will not.
Can we make sure that we, proper notification on our page, that the recycling centers will not be open on Monday because of the holiday?
It's both on the Fairfield County Facebook page and the website. It was posted today, and a press release went out to the local media.
All right, thank you. Next, we are down to, there is no executive session for tonight. Now, we are down to number 19. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record reflect, six zero. We are now adjourned.